It's the order. We good?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming. That's the whole purpose of tonight is to have a listening session with the public. You know, we're all with a bits of this big process of first evaluating your buildings. It's been going on for almost a year, then assessing possible sites where a new school or schools could go. There is no decision and all this is now the board gets to step in and assess all that information that the impact group put together for us. Scott led that group for al- almost a year and they're still convening. So they along with the architects did a thorough job of assessing sites, looking at options. And now that big assessment, not a recommendation has come to us. And so tonight what we're going to do is one, give you an overview, just kind of level set everybody of where that assessment landed. Turn to two possible sites for a possible new elementary and middle school. Right? So that's, that's what we're looking at, two possible sites. They've been assessed, we'll give you all the same information we got, so everyone knows just what, what the assessment consisted of and where it landed today. Then tonight, the bulk of the meeting will be listening to you in terms of your opinion, your ideas, your thoughts on those two sites or anything else you want to talk about tonight. The board typically has a public comment limited to about three minutes. And so tonight will be a little more liberal about that, if I can use that word. You know, we use it, let the time go a little bit longer. If you need a little longer, we'll take that time. We're here to listen, we got tonight. You know, I gotta be home by midnight. Other than that, that's, you know, that's it. So we'll, we'll take advantage of the fact that you came out on a snowy night. Be conscious of, you know, if you're saying the same thing someone else did, you might, you might shorten just a little bit. We count on everybody to be respectful. We're not here to have any debate. Typically at a public meeting, we wouldn't comment, but we're at a verb session, so we might ask you a question or clarify. We'll just have a respectful discussion all the way around. So that's, that's what we're about this evening. We'll end the meeting with the board having some time to process and digest what we heard from you. And so to get us all on the same spot here tonight, I've asked Superintendent Rick Cole to give the overview, which, you know, it could be 50 slides. We left it in hand six, just really the essentials of these two sites and the assessment that's gone off in the past, past year. Then we'll enter public comment.
Great. I'm going to start by saying.
Oh, I, I'm supposed to issue a vocal.
That's okay. Mr. Iverson.
Here.
Mr. Lance.
Here.
Mrs. Mackey.
Here.
Mrs. Schick.
Here.
And Mr. Taylor.
Here. President of California. And now.
First, I want to say thank you to all of you here. It's awesome to have people here to talk about something exciting that we're doing instead of a huge personnel issue or some tragic thing that happened to all of us. And so I appreciate everyone being willing participants in the process. Because we're a mix of, some people have been here all along as the master planning advisory committee started a year ago, January, and some of us are new. I thought I'd take a moment to just share a few slides of how we, how we got here. This all began with the board initially, more than a year ago, August, saying, what are those things by which we might make a decision about whether to or not to pursue new school facilities? These have been up here for all of our board meetings and have been part of the board's decision-making process all along, as there have been decisions that have been happening all, all along through this process. We've had many information and community input sessions prior to this. Began in October, November of 24. I did a series of six kind of sessions out in the community, one in Spanish, one of local church, one at each of the schools. Just talking about what did we find when we did our facility and academic adequacy studies? We had hired RTA, Architectural Firm, to do those studies for us. And you'll see that that's kind of our mode of operation. There's little loops here. We get professional input, we share that professional input with the community, we get some feedback and share that with the board who go out and get other professional input. So that started back October, November of 24. Then in January of 25, we started with the master plan advisory committee. I think it's kind of fluctuated between about 30 and 40 people, really consistent attendance, which has been great. We reviewed facility and academic adequacy studies, and we also brought in a demographer to look at, not only where kids live and adults live, but also talk about how important the birth rates in the community and how are we growing, shrinking, or staying the same? The punchline is we're staying, going to stay about the same. We spent the next meeting in February talking about school finance, the difference between regular school funding and capital projects funding. And then we did a little bit of digging in with that group about what's the process where you renovate buildings versus build a new building? What's that look like, what are the pros and cons? The following meeting, we heard information about kind of building lifespan, like how long do buildings last? How long does the plumbing last, the electrical last? And then we also looked at how does having high quality educational settings impact outcomes for students? That's teacher retention and, and student learning. And that March meeting, we did an activity around what are the building options and what would make the most sense? And at that point, the master planning advisory committee started to land on this notion of a pre-K eight school. Partly because of those goals that we laid out at the beginning, there it's fiscally responsible. Having one school over two schools saves between 20 and 25 million dollars and the interest on those dollars. So people were like, yeah, that, that makes sense. Following, we reviewed that data in April, we did kind of an initial site, looked at the Vista site. If you're not totally familiar with that is, it's across the street from Veterans Memorial Park up in the PLPOA. And we looked at a high school site. I'll show pictures of both of those. And we spent a little bit more time just talking about how much is a community could be bonded for and what is a best grant? And a best grant is grant funding, competitive grant funding through the state that can help buy down capital projects. School districts get operational funds through property taxes, but if we want to build something, we have to raise those money as a community and we can buy down that debt by getting a best grant. So we talked about those. Following that, we hired Hanson Communications and Newbridge Strategy to do a community poll. And that happened right at the end of the school year last year. And that was around like, what's people tolerance for bonding? If we were to ask community members to vote for a tax, what does that look like? And it was enough positive, it was about 54% people were saying like, yeah, we, we would do that. And we were, that we said, or the board said, let's continue to investigate. Let's keep going and see what, what other information we would need. So in August, we brought the impact back together. We looked through that polling data. We did some site safety and security presentation on what do different sites have to offer when it comes to safety and security? Interesting that the, the big thing with safety and security is all around traffic flow. While we may all think active shooter drill, the vast majority of accidents on school campuses involve car and human interaction. So that was the bulk of the safety presentation was like, how do you move people around safely? Following that review of the polling data, we did find out that people have, you might find this hard to believe, strong opinions about where a school should go. And so that popped up in the polling data to the point where people were like, oh, yeah, I vote yes here, but maybe not yes there. Enough that the board was, he said, can we get further site analysis so we can make a really good decision based on some facts about those two, two different sites? So we contracted with SGM Engineering to do that initial, they're calling it due diligence site study. There would still be need to, a deeper study once a site is selected, but this helps. It also helps us with our best grants, showing that we have done this due diligence stuff to take out of our own pocket. We've looked at place, makes the best grant more favorable because you're like, oh, you've been doing your research, you know what you're about to build on. And then after November meeting, Impact, SGM actually came here and shared some of that analysis. And the thing that I've been waiting for since October of 24 happened, where a lot of people there were talking about new schools for our kids. And that's very exciting. And then the board, after hearing that data, said, you know, we should really listen to the community now. We've had some real fact-driven data from engineers, how are people feeling? I'm, I'm going to pass this off to Bob, but I'm going to say, just repeat something. I think it was in the paper, but I think it's worth repeating. You know, the, the biggest thing that we can come to is that an outcome for all of this work is new facilities for our students. And not everyone thinks like us as an individual. Some people are thinking about a site different than the one you're thinking of, but in the end, we're going to have to find a way to come together that the site that the board has selected is, is good for all of our, all of our kids, even if it wasn't the one that you had a strong, strong opinion about. And that may not be easy, but it will be, it will be important that we're able to rally around what the students really need, which is the best learning environment possible. So thank you for participating in that. Thank you for giving your time tonight. Now, Bob, I'll turn it over to you.
Do you, do you want to go just, just?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Show the.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Equally weighted that this guy.
I got ahead of myself. This is the details on the due diligence, this is what they looked into or had the engineers look into. Site analysis, traffic evaluation, look at natural resources. That originally looked at two different sites. This is the Vista property, right across the street from Veterans Memorial Park. And then the original site on the high school, it's a little bit light here, but this is the bus loop. This is where the transportation department is. And I'm calling this the original location of the high school for, for a reason and a moment here. And this is what the site analysis down the possibility of putting the K eight school right here on the high school campus. And we did, or the engineers did, gave us a matrix to compare the Vista site with the high school site. They used all of the criteria they're asked to look into, weighted them basically on the importance being a dollar value. They gave us some dollar amounts, which are at the very bottom of that screen. All of this is available on our, on our website. And since then, there's been a change in kind of thinking about the high school site. And then we've asked RTA to do revised placement of that building. So where the previous building, they were saying should really sit here. They flipped that over onto, which this is largely the softball fields right here and the baseball field over in this area. And they placed the K eight school there. They see they, they're suggesting moving the baseball field up and identifying where some practice fields are and such. What's significant about that is they redone the matrix and it's really changed some of the things that were making the original site difficult. It has changed some of that by reducing the amount of excavation and really reduce the amount of wetlands impact. And so this new site appears to be more favorable. And when it came down to dollars, it's pretty comparable in, in millions of dollars cost to, to the Vista site, where the original high school site was in between 12 and 18 million dollars to build on that site. The, the new proposed high school site is between about seven and 11 million dollars. And the Vista site cost range between six to about nine, nine million dollars. So thanks, Eric. I got ahead of myself.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that you, that you have that, you know, that detail is available to your own study. But where we sit is those two sites have been assessed according to those objective criteria. The board is on a timeline to pick a site in January. This is a listening session tonight, which we tend to get a lot out of with, with respect to that decision. There'll be other listening sessions with the staff of the school next Monday. We have a meeting on Tuesday and then we'll have a meeting in January for that, see if it's, it's made. So with that, if you wanted to make public comment, I assume you've signed up. If you haven't signed up and you decide you want to, you still can. But I'll keep an eye on time and try to limit you to five-ish minutes. If you feel like you've got a lot of content and really want to share some more, really will us. And so, so with that, I'm going to ask Heather just to call names in the order that you signed up. Have you come up to the podium here, state your name, but then we're, we're here to listen and we're so glad you're here to come and share your thoughts.
First, we have Vic and Joanne.
They called us.
Oh, I didn't know I was on the list.
Well, we've, we've had people play tricks on their friends by saying. Yeah, come on up here, Vic.
I'm Vic Lucarella, license engineer of Colorado, Wind, New Jersey. And I did send an email in today. Would you like me to touch those points or?
You're more than welcome to. I did share every email that was sent to me, I did pass along to the board.
Okay. Well, that is really.
Highlight a couple of those thoughts you had. Go ahead and.
Okay.
Go ahead and highlight some of those thoughts. So the audience can hear.
Can you move your mic up to your mouth, please?
I'm sure.
Move your mic up.
Okay, yeah, better? Okay, thanks. One I feel most strongly about is I truly believe we need a traffic light at Vista and 160. This is assuming that the Vista site is selected and it appears we're leaning that way in my understanding. I think we need a right turn lane for westbound school buses. And we need a left turn arrow for eastbound turns. I, I just can picture in my mind lots of bad things happening there in the morning, especially if the weather is not cooperating. Okay. Second thing, I didn't see anything in the SGM report regarding electric infrastructure. And that's someplace where LPEA should be contacted, I think now. I don't think we're putting the cart before the horse, because if they need a transformer upgrade or feeder upgrade, that's going to be a lot of money. Third thing is the SGM report comic lost over, I think, the sewage pumping issue. And they put in their report 800,000 to 1.5 million, I believe. And I think we're at risk there with not enough detail yet. And I think that could bite us. I've been on a lot of projects where small percentage items that were not looked in sufficient detail fit us and ate up our contingency. And we found ourselves over budget. And that's about it. Another thing came to mind after I sent the email, what is the water quantity and pressure available at Vista? Does that, I mean, if we're told, well, we need a new water line or higher pressure pumps or something, be a lot of money. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Vic. Thanks for your comments.
Next, we have Barbara.
You can tilt that.
Quite as tall as Vic. Surprise, I'm the library director and I brought something to read. As the director of the Ruby System Memorial Library, I've been asked several times by members of the public for the library's opinion on the placement of the new elementary and middle schools in the Archuleta School District Master Plan. I cannot speak on behalf of the library board as the issue has not been raised during any of our public meetings. But I can, what I can do is relate our experience at the library and how that might help you in your very difficult decisions going forward. When I first came to Pagosa Springs in September 2024, I heard lovely stories about plans for a new elementary school adjacent to the existing high school and that walking distance to the library had been a major factor in that decision. What a clever community, I thought. The public library is a sanctuary for so many children after school from the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as children who need a safe place to be until their working parents arrive. It's a place where children can pursue their own interests beyond their school assignments or delve further into the things that they learned about that day. It's a place to socialize with friends under the supervision of caring adults. Everyone is welcome and it's free. As a nod to the hundreds of children we saw every week after school last year, we organized elementary school tutoring at the library on Wednesdays, craft activities and team gaming clubs. If they were hungry, we provided nutritious snacks. Our public computers were consistently full. We were delighted with all of the relationships we were building, knowing that in another year, we would have so much more space in our library addition to provide after school and summer programs. We look forward to the day when we can host that many children and more once again. As an administrator, it is clear to me that there are many factors involved in your decision and I do not envy your position. I can tell you that the library plays an enormous role in keeping our children safe and helping them succeed in school. Any way the school district and the library can work together toward that end will reap great benefits for our students. Keeping the schools within walking distance of the library is a great start. This summer, we will open an expanded modern library and we'll have a new children's librarian on staff. We're excited about all the learning opportunities we will be able to provide. I can't wait to see the faces of our young visitors when they visit the new library for the first time. And I look forward to many future partnerships with the school district. Thank you for your dedication to the present and future students of Archuleta.
Thank you, Barb. Barbara, can I ask you a quick question? I should know this, but when is the projected? It's coming. What's the projected? Oh, this is.
Next, we have Kelly.
Oh, so that's the thing to read. So, good evening, I'm Kelly Tooten, and I've been a part of Impact since it started in January. And I'm speaking tonight as a parent of two children and as a resident of PLPOA. We often hear about the statistics, statistic that 67% of the school district's population live west of Pater Road. But I just wanted to push back a little and state that that single, single statistic does not reflect the lived daily lives, the lived daily reality of families in Pagosa Springs. When schools are spread far apart, families with children of different ages will carry the heaviest load. In Pagosa, many families already juggle work and long commutes. Our schools are separated, we're asking parents to drive in opposite directions every single morning and again, every single afternoon, regardless of their after school activities. This happens for parents of young children who are attending the multiple daycare facilities downtown and again, as their older children enter high school. Even just 30 extra minutes a day adds up to hours each week, days each year and real money that families are spending on their gas bill. If we ask a community to pass a bond that increases their taxes and then also create an ongoing cost for them in fuel and time, we are layering the burdens on the very families we're trying to serve. Keeping schools together simplifies life permanently. Align start times, reduce chaos for parents coordinating multiple school schedules and simple unified family drop off, drop offs will reduce stress and lost work time. If we can reduce those annual costs for both families and the district when it comes to simplifying bus routes, it's hard to justify a plan that knowingly increases them. That's all for now. Thank you so much for listening.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly.
Next, we have Darren Lewis.
Good evening.
Lisa, we good?
I have two hats. And the first hat I have on right now is my parent hat. I raised five children. They've all gone through the school district, they've all graduated. And all the schooling was downtown for that. Always wished for a better school, elementary, you know? I watch the kids and I continue to watch them. It's definitely needed and I, I tell you, I do not envy you guys and the position you're in and the decision you have to make. As a parent, though, I can tell you, a little selfish, convenience wise, I can remember picking my kids up. They're this tall. Hey Dad, let's go to the park. I'm a minute away from not only one park, but several different parks. Dad, let's go walk by the river. Okay, let's go check things out. As my children got older, now they're getting more responsibility. They want to go and do things on their own. They want to go walk that river by themselves with safe trails. They want to go explore Reservoir Hill and all this right after school. The convenience for parents and their families of having everything downtown is huge. It was huge for me. Totally understand, though, the two locations you're looking at. And the positives and negatives. There's always a cause and effect, whatever decisions you guys make. There's going to be people that'll be for it, might be cheaper, there'll be other people that are going to be, why'd we do this? That's all I have to say from a parent standpoint, okay? I'm going to take that hat off, I'm going to put my Parks and Rec director hat on. I was asked for the first time for, to comment on possibly this decision. And basically, I was asked to just give the amenities of what's provided with the parks downtown. I'm the first one to say, we need parks uptown as well. Just a matter of being able to afford that at some point. But right now, all of our parks are downtown and they've been that way for decades. There's been a lot of money invested from the town, county into our parks over the years to provide amenities for our children to have easy access to and to enjoy. Especially over the past 10 years, there's a lot of amenities that have been added to our parks. That email was sent to Rick and Bob. I know they forwarded it to everyone else.
It forwarded to everyone else, yes.
And so you saw those amenities offered at each of our parks. I'm certainly not here to go through all that. You also saw what's planning on to be added in our parks in the future. Bike parks, multipurpose pavilion, things like that. I see this, this second concept over here at the high school where we flipped it onto the ball fields. You know, makes sense, you know? But the effect of that is, you know, the town and the school district, we have an intermedal, a, a government agreement in regards to using each other's facilities, right? We've done that for years. For us, for the, from the Parks and Rec perspective, you know, we use those three ball fields. For now, I need those three ball fields, you know? It's not some, it's not something, though, I'd use year round. But the importance of those ball fields for the kids and the adults in the softball leagues, it's pretty important to those families to have that. We certainly tried from a town perspective to plan out new ball fields across down in the lagoon property. People have heard kind of Yamamichi South, south of the pickleball courts. That was all planned out and it was great. Everything was, I was going to love it if we could finally afford to build it. But we've had to back off, had to take those 10 acres. That was planned for future baseball fields because we knew the decision you guys were going to have down the road. So we were trying to plan ahead with those ball fields. But now that 10 acres that were. But now that ten acres that were supposed to be ball fields, that's now for a sanitation facility. So there is no place for ball fields. The one ball field in Yamaguchi Park will not handle Parks and Rec needs for the, for the kids of this community. It's not only that, you have club teams out there that are trying to find space and they use the high school fields during the summer. Is that truly your problem? No. If you decide to build this downtown, then the town's going to have to figure it out. Along with the county, because we need ball fields. And that'll be a whole nother line of parents lining up, you know, in regard to that issue. So, um, you know, at the end of the day, as much as, as much as I would like to say, hey, put it here or put it there. All I can kind of give you guys is the cause and effect of your decisions, right? I gave you a parent side of things that I thought of, I've given you the Parks and Rec side of things if you decide to put it downtown. Okay? Certainly, I'm not here to, I'm not representing anything from town council or from my, my town manager in regard to this. I've simply given you the Parks and Rec perspective of what's going on. Okay, I want to make sure I make that clear. I was not sent here by them to give you a town perspective. I'm simply here to give you the Parks and Rec perspective, because that's what I know. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Let me just say one thing before the next person that the whole, uh, Karen brought up that if, if you build the, that K building at a different spot, you flipped it as Rick called it. It goes on top of the softball field. That was an option we asked the architect to look at because building into the hillside is so expensive. Made the two sites, Vista versus downtown really different and cost-wise. So the board said, is there a way you can fit that different? That's just another option. Again, so that's just us stretching our brain, you guys stretching our brain to say, and we looked at every possible way. Do we want to lose those fields and move that, that building there or not? That's things we have to already the pros and cons on, but, uh, both of those options are still viable at the high school site. They just come with different pluses and minuses with them.
Next we have Amber. Okay. And Ellie.
Hi, my name is Ellie Higamp. Um, I was a board member for PPUS for a time. And then, um, I also worked on the grant and helped implement the playground that went into PPUS. Um, so I looked over the best grant this morning and looked over the sample of questions. And what I ran across is one of the questions that said, what state or local resources or community partnerships? Um, and other, other than the best grant are you looking at? And I really think that your chances of securing the best grant will be influenced when you look at the community support of the downtown location. Because you have the community center as a support system. You have the parks as a support system. You have the libraries as a support system. You have the town and the county supporting the infrastructure of what is been happening in our town for the last hundred years, give or take. So I think it's really, really important that you guys look and leverage your best grant on the location. You don't pick a location and then go for the best grant. You look at the grants and you think about your community resources. In what is going to bring you, um, your best liable options. I also feel like the town has used you, um, as a resource for grants. And that partnership and that relationship of you guys working together is a more sustainable way of acting. And also clearly with the library. And I think, uh, when you give a kid a sense of belonging. Everything just falls into place. And there's two ways that that can happen. One is immerse those children in a community. Which is what's happening right now with our downtown location. And then the second way is to immerse them in nature. And we are so blessed to be downtown on the river and have all these beautiful resources of the river, the walking path, the views from our downtown location are so memorable for those children. To look at the largest wilderness in the lower forty eight when they're out playing is, um, is going to give them really a sense of connection to nature. Um, and the river is invaluable. I look at PCI, my kids go to PCI. And I had heard, you know, oh, we'll find a place for PCI to be. Well, PCI goes to the river two, three times a week. They're always utilizing the river. You cannot give them the river at Vista to, um, to use. So those are, um, and I understand that, you know, and I very much appreciate you volunteering your time as board members to be part of this process because I know it's a lot of work. But I feel like the future of these children is better served by the town, town location.
Thank you, Ellie.
I think it's Catty, Kelly, Katie. I was like, I know.
I didn't catch what, what did you say?
It's Katie. Hi, everyone. I, uh, came at the last meeting for the first time and was introduced to the process. Rick, thanks for kind of laying out all that has been done up to this point. And when I left and I, if you were there, you know, I asked a lot of questions in that, um, session. And when I left, I had even more questions. And just so you know who I am, I'm Katie. I have this Ellie's. We said we paddled the community together as we spent three years employing our community with Equity Center Community Design to write to grants and receive seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to plan and install a playground in an area of our town that did not have a playground. The Playground for the People Project that is along the walking path overseeing the wetlands. And she's right, you look at what your grant needs, you start there. And partnerships are super important. Rick, you said this in the last meeting, partnerships, right? Where are partnerships? PLPOA that came up and it's a private company that they serve their HOA. Parks and Rec, they have been mandated to give us playgrounds, the library too. These partnerships are important. If we can share parking space with a high school, very, that's my thought. That, so we don't need parking at the high school in the same way. That's a partnership. Having fields that are maintained, that are not part of a school board line item budget, you don't, that doesn't come out of your money, that comes out of right? These, these are valuable. Understanding our demographics where everyone lives. I had seen sixty-eight percent split closer and then this and that. And then I looked a little deeper, oh, get that line that they picked. That road on one side is the airport and the other side are where all the houses are. So yes, they are closer. But they all still use that same road coming out, right? We're, we're basically split middle, right? It's not an, it's not even a talking point anymore. Traffic, they said, well, traffic actually kind of basically the same, even a little better downtown, more access points, right? I, I got kind of curious. Okay, so if we have a second school site, what's that mean for transportation, right? We have like shortages and things. And that line item you see every year, how much it costs, right? This is a capital expense, right? One time, going to build a building. But if that is more expensive every year. And then I thought, okay, well, what does it look like? It doesn't matter like where you live because apparently in our bus service district, the middle's or the, the middle is basically the high school, which is our survey area. And and in that service area, one of the, I also looked at the best friend. And one of the top things is you have to have a need, like stuff is falling down. I was like, oh, check, yeah. We, that's where they need it, right? Safety, right? And the next one was these partnerships and it said, project benefits the broader community including equitable access for all students. I understand we have a population that travels really far, really, really far, the tribal nation that comes here. And in this last meeting, and I don't know if I misheard, but it was brought up and someone was like, oh, it's just like twelve kids. But it's not twelve kids, it's over a hundred kids. And that's a, at ten thousand dollars a kid, that's a million dollars, that's your line item. And maybe they don't want to drive any further than they have to. Maybe PPUS is even better. I don't know, but if you are paying attention, equitable access for your population, this is our community. Very much so. And in that, what it is, the community, when we had to do this, we had to get members from our, we got a list from the grant people that said, uh, someone that has physical disabilities. And it's mentally challenged, the elderly, the youth, we had to have kids on our panel. We had to ask them all, what makes you feel welcome? And they said to us, we don't actually care what you build, but if you get all these people together, what you build will be great. And we had to look at the history and that's why there's logs there, because we're a lumbering community. And the history of Pagosa is downtown, these aren't there. Now, these kids are our community. We have this generation, families here. And yes, to some point, I mean, the thought of like what it would mean to transport like a kid shuffle is like mind blowing. What is the lived experience? And then I got to thinking, when I got home, I said, I need to head down with my kids. Hey, did anyone ask the kids, right? They're the ones who actually have to go to school. They're the ones that are gonna actually have to get on the bus or actually have to go here. And right now, I, in this whole process, I found out that we have fly fishing after school middle school club. That is so cool. They all have facilities that have been created by all of the taxpayer dollars and the grants and interest that are downtown with paths connecting so much of it, ADA physical pathways, right? Our education is all here in this area. And when I looked at all these different things, I went, okay, traffic, hmm, not really an issue. Cost, which was the issue, right? We had variables. And I was like, why is that number like saying, that doesn't seem right? Or, you know, what, what are you moving around here? Why is that a range? And that's not a range, right? And yeah, it seems like there's some chapters about water stuff at this one site. And when I realized was like, okay, I didn't want to like do this process. So here's one site that's there, Brad Daniel, and you built a building, cut the design, right? But you didn't do that for the high school site. And even now, as kind of like moving it, you didn't say, here's the high school site, what can you build here? You just, from what I understand, it's that building locked onto this site and it's like, it doesn't fit and then it has to run around. And it still doesn't fit. And what you're asking for is the amount of money from the taxpayers, right? We need, what happened to the million dollars, which is to build what is best for the student. It even said it, I wrote it down, I brought it, it said, the student's interests come first. It is the only thing underlying in that whole list of what is being embarked on. And when that first slide that you showed, breaking down these different points, the traffic, these, these things, it's like they're all, they line up everywhere, right? Kind of the same path, the same traffic. We didn't even try to like custom build something. And one of the other moms was like, yeah, I've had this thing, a lot of things shoved in the hillside. And then I looked it up and there's all these schools that they had built into a hillside to save money on cost and heating and made different levels for different grades to access outside, like cool stuff. Do we have an opportunity right now to like reimagine what education can be like for our family? Our kids can walk to this ice skating rink, maybe we'll have hockey stars. This is happening, I'm sure of it. This is, this multi-access pavilion is coming to Pagosa. But when I think about like, okay, what's it gonna be, these memories, right? That our kids are having. How rare is it to say, I walked with my friends, we bought ice cream and we went to the row domes on the way to the river to fly fishing club with a bike path to pick up my little sister on the way to the library. Like that is it. And, you know, our values, right? I know, like, like I heard, like, oh, well, what about property development values in Vista? They want to do this or, you know, all these different like narratives that run along, right? But that view, like that imagination, that asking and answering the right questions and getting information from all the people that are our community stakeholders. Then this will be the right natural community for our kids. And I probably, I mean, this. Oh, I have one other. Rich, what is?
We was at the site and I think that the site surrounding what I was coming up today, because this is my question, like, when I left that last meeting and I was like, okay. Educational opportunities at one site got a hundred percent A plus, totally colored in, right? And being like super good. And that was the good, the site. And then the downtown thing with the river, it's like passed me the fifty percent. I was like, okay, so like, well, maybe like sites surrounding weren't really like part of the scope of the project. And I was like, wait, if there is a nuclear power plant next to one in the site, they probably take it into consideration. So of course, we have to take in like surrounding, switching to like, oh my God, the really long list from Darren. And all of those children, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids. Like big hundreds, like five hundred, six hundred kids are serviced by those after school programs that are happening like in walking distance. And so what I would say is, you know, you said it today, but we're looking for the best learning environment for our our community, our, our annual generations.
Next we have Abby.
I think I'll keep this short for my legs to collapse.
I didn't catch, I didn't catch your name.
Abby, Karen. I will start by, I have already sent you a letter. It was before the last meeting. Um, and I've kind of sat here deciding whether I wanted to speak right now. So I'm going to keep it short because I think I want to absorb more of this and take what I absorbed from the last meeting and probably write you another letter. Again, so my legs don't collapse, but, um, I do just, something that came in, I think Katie really already touched with it. She, it was, it was me that she was talking about. I, I just did a, a brief like architectural, you know, search of schools built into hillsides. And there are so many beautiful, um, and incredible opportunities, uh, with that. I mean, one, uh, school. I mean, one school description said it was explicitly built into the existing hillside to reduce excavation and energy load. Another one was multiple buildings were built on steep hillsides with different levels of terrorist, you know, play opportunities. And I realize that's like a whole nother span of cost and whatever. But I think there's been like negativity, like, oh, it's gonna be wedged into this hillside. That was a quote from the Pagosa Sun article. Sorry, my legs are shaking, you know? But I just think there's so much potential in that space if we just look outside the box. And I think that that's kind of what needs to happen there. And for me, when I first heard about it potentially being at the high school, I was like, oh, my gosh, it's amazing. We could have this little educational bubble where it's one way in, one way out. There's no through traffic, there's no highway. It's just like kids and learning at different ages and influence. And that to me was like, how could you think anything else? So we'll touch on that. And then the last thing that I'm gonna say is just, I look at, I have a sixth grader right now and I have younger kids that will be in middle school that will hopefully take advantage of this. My oldest will be at high school at the time. But the independence kind of in this area that middle schoolers are kind of just getting this like, getting on their feet and the sense of independence of like leading school and being able to walk and and go hang out with their friends and and go to the skate park and go to the library. And I just think that that's just a really fun thing to give the kids. And I just don't see the opportunity up there for that independence to thrive. So in there, and I will probably email you again.
Very good, yeah, please do, any thoughts? No, thanks, Ed.
Next, Bill Hudson.
Thank you, Bill Hudson. Some great presentations we've just heard. So I was I was part of the impact from the beginning and went through with the processes and spoke to most of you personally during that. And I think you you've heard some great arguments for a downtown location. Of course, I'm on the board of Pagosa Peak Open School. We're an uptown location. Lot of, lot of the parents at our school drop off kids at the high school and drop off kids at PPOS. It is, it is a strain on the family to have separate locations for schools. You're lucky if you have two parents in the family and and one can take one and one can take the other. The the mention of the ball fields disappearing, it was, it was hard to, hard to think about that when we know that there's, there's kids that really benefit from that sport. It'd be great if there was a ball field uptown as part of, as part of the Vista School. That would be a real benefit. We we only have one park uptown, we have nine downtown. And so if you, if you're thinking about what is, how do you serve the community? Not just the kids, but not just the teachers, but the community. Building a real playground, a real athletic field uptown where there is none would be a benefit. We do have a playground that's open to public at at the POS. But it's it's small and there's no athletic field. So that's another thing to put into your, into your hat and mix around. The school district went to the voters in 2011 proposing the downtown location. It lost three to one at the poll, at the ballot. I don't know if people were opposed to the location. Most of the people do live uptown. But a K eight school was proposed for down next to the high school. And it utterly failed. Would, would the voters, looking at it realistically, would the voters support something that's uptown? That serves most of the people? We're, we're not talking parents who are very concerned about their kids having access to the, to the parks and the downtown amenities. We're talking about the other people in the community. Would they be more prone to vote and approve this if it serves them? I know when the high school went in, the, the community really got behind that because there was an auditorium for the first time in our community, a real auditorium. A lot of support came for the high school from that decision to put in a community auditorium. And if you're gonna offer something to the whole community, the ones that pay the property taxes, the ones that go to the polls and vote, they're mostly my age and older. They go and vote on their own property taxes. And if, if you're gonna create something that serves them, great, I think that would help your effort. And we haven't talked much about PPOS. It's been clear from, from everything that I've participated in. If there's a bond issue, it's possible that PPOS would be involved in that. We are in the process of, of looking at what our needs are at, at our school, which is not a school. It's actually an office building, but we, we do have needs and, and we're, we're gonna get back to you on that and let you know what, what we would like to see if we're packaging a deal that serves all the, all the district schools. So anyway, those are just a few thoughts. Like everybody said, don't envy you this decision, but go for it.
Last we have Sophia.
Hi, my name is Sophia Siza and I am the founder of our community's independent softball team. I stand before you not just as a student, but as the voice for 13 young women whose lives have been transformed by this field. I understand the urgent need for new school facilities, but this decision is not choosing between education and recreation. It's about recognizing the educational value that this sport program already provides. Last June, I recognized the gap in our community. There was no accessible softball option, so I built the program from the ground up. This program is not just a sport, it is a masterclass in teamwork, discipline, and commitment for the girls involved. The girls on this team are showing up every week, committed to practice, committed to their team and committed to their community. We are fostering future leaders right here on this field. The question before the board is not should we start a program? But should we dismantle a successful program? We have invested significantly to make this work. We have already spent a significant amount of money raised through sponsors, donors. And just last week, two weeks ago, sorry, we had a bake sale outside of the city market and raised $700. This is to secure this location and run this team and be a part of the league that we were invited to join. This includes league fees, equipment, and our jerseys. Tearing down this field essentially means declaring that all of the effort and money has been wasted. We spent significant time and resources trying to find an appropriate practice location. And this field is not just a field, it is the only functional and affordable space we have found to accommodate a full-size team practice. I might be a freshman, but I've dedicated countless hours since last June to make this program a reality. Every role on that team has invested their time, effort, and heart. I respect the proposal for the new K eight building, but I believe we can achieve that goal without sacrificing this vital community resource. If the construction, if the construction must move forward here, is there any way that we can work to perhaps build a softball field into the original design? Or even a smaller or multi-use field is better than nothing. If we lose this field, we lose the program. Those 13 girls who love this sport, who rely on this team for fitness, friendship, and mentorship will have no place to go. This decision doesn't build a new school, it shuts down a community asset that is actively benefiting our youth. This field is not just dirt and grass, it is the foundation of our team. It is where confidence is built, where friendships are forged, and where young women learn the value of their own strength. I ask you to look past the age of the program's founder and recognize the passion and commitment of those young women who are counting on us. Please preserve this field, preserve this program, preserve the opportunity for the girls in this community to wear this sport well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia, very well, very well said. That's all we have. We're, we're open to anyone else that is spurred to comment, decide if they're not. If you'd like to, come on up and there we have two, so, yeah. You go, you go ahead, Jen, and then what's your, your name?
My name is Sarah.
Sorry, you'll be next, yeah.
Hi, I'm Jen Pitchard. Like Darren, I have a couple of different hats. I don't have kids that go to school here anymore, but my last one just graduated last year. So I have had one in the school district for the last long time, 20 years. I don't really have a preference where the school goes. But what I do have an opinion on is the facilities. And if, if the downtown, I understand, I so understand the downtown location. But if it takes away facilities and there isn't a plan to grow for those amenities to thrive or to have a plan for future athletic facilities, which can be in a different location, it doesn't have to be at that location. But it seems like you're kind of maxing out downtown. So that's just one thing I think you should look at. And my other hat is I work for Pagosa Lakes and I'm gonna let Alan talk about that. But just know that from a personal standpoint, we welcome you out there. And I know it is private, but the land that you're on is not actually Pagosa Lakes. And there is a lot of green belt space out there. So just, I guess that's sort of my question is looking to the future for athletic facilities and how that grows.
Thank you. Well, Sarah and then Alan.
Hi, my name is Sarah Mack. I have an eight-year-old who actually tends PPOS. We moved here in 2021, we actually relocated after Hurricane Ida hit our community. Wiped out the schools just south of New Orleans. One of the major decisions in moving here versus Durango or some of the other areas was we love the tight-knit community and how walkable, that all the schools were in a walkable area. I also have written hundreds of millions of dollars of grants for the city of New Orleans. And so all the points, and I actually worked with these ladies on the playground for PPOS, those were super valid points when it comes time to write those grants that you were gonna use as leverage, you're gonna be able to leverage a lot more of these city assets when you write those grants. And then the other thing I was just gonna say is a city member that, you know, I walk to the post office basically every day. And I can't tell you how often I see classes out by the river, either doing gym classes, but I see them out walking in the community a lot. And as a PhD environmental scientist as well, when you can create, when you could have a curriculum that actually gets kids into nature, it's so much better for all aspects of our education. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate some of what's already been, been made. And thank you so much for your guys' time and energy. I'm sure it's a tough decision.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Sarah, thanks for coming. Go ahead, Alan.
I, I don't, didn't have anything prepared, I wasn't really prepared to talk, but thank you for giving me a few minutes. I, I just want to kind of make, bring some awareness to you, fellas and ladies, that I'm the general manager at Pagosa Lakes Property Owners Association. And one thing I would like to emphasize is that to do some forward thinking and look at partnerships with P O P U A. And I would encourage you to reach out to our board of directors and look at potential of the Vista site on how you could partner. I'll give you an example, the Weathers Memorial Park, that property was Pagosa Lakes property. It partnered up, it is now a park for the general public. Across the street there, we have a community garden where we partnered, partnered up with Pelci, Pelci Archileta. And those they can testify to her and I teamed up, we partner, now we have a community garden there. We do have a MOU with accounting regarding building a field behind the recreation center that would be open to the public. So I throw these things out there as there is possibilities for partnership with P O P U A to try to help it out if you were to decide Vista is the site for you. We have a lot of green belt property across there. The guy talked about, you know, all kinds of ideas. We have the start of trails, we already have the trail going down three different sides of your property. And we just need to connect them before. But there's a pond over there that is right across the street. Very popular birding sites, we have flax up there identifying birds. So there is nature and opportunities there. So I guess my point is, 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 you know, I look to you guys to not be afraid to approach our board of directors and do some forward thinking and think about the possibilities and partnerships that lay there at that particular site. And I thank you guys for all you do. And yeah, there's been a lot of good arguments both sides and I wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you, Alan. That's true, buddy. Have a good one.
So with what you said, so moving and you're so brave and I'm so impressed.
Thank you.
I'm impressed, right? Like with the field that she was like, the partnership could be, could the field still there?
Yeah, I think that would be something of discussion with our board of directors.
I mean, it's less than a like, now there's a ton of kids running around in the backyard, you know?
Yeah, because right across the street from the Vista site is our administration building, our clubhouse. We have the pond. And there's a lot of green belts like there, space. You could build probably a softball field and a football field. You know, it's just ideas.
Yeah, I was just curious, I was just curious.
It's ideas, see, that's my encouragement is, is that there's space that could be opportunity for partnership and negotiation.
Right, I, I appreciate that, that, I mean, what everyone's saying anyways, too. Don't close your mind to anything, right? Think, think new thoughts, don't try, try to start narrowing it down now, stay big, stay broad, think of other things. We, we know that fields and gyms are essential for all these things we want our kids to do in the garden class. So that's very much on our minds as we make this decision go forward. Go ahead.
I don't have a comment, but I have a question for a little people, so Dave, you all?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they talked about how we've had these special opportunities to share, who participated in one of them. Have you held any spaces with youth? I mean, I thought it was pretty brave and courageous and also very powerful of Sophia to come in and bring youth voice into this way. Have you held those spaces with the youth of our community to see what they would like to see?
Not at this point, you know, typically, let's say, typically that comes with the actual design of the school and the spaces around the school, less so in my past experience. I could have faulty past experience and we engage you when making a difficult decision about where it should, should land. That's, that's a straight answer, I'm good.
Yeah, but, but it's, I'll, I'll just say, my take on it was, that's a viable point, you know? We talk to each other a lot, talk about them a lot.
And we talk to their parents.
Yeah, exactly. It's all about them, so, you know? Interesting concept there, you know, especially when it's, it's these places that are, I guess one tick I have on it, in our world at Pagosa, these are distant places, right? If you're in a city, these are close, right? They're close together, a couple, couple miles away, but a student perspective on it, very valid. Yeah, Amanda, yeah, come on in. Yeah, Amanda, yeah, come on up.
Like Darren, I wear a bunch of hats. I'm the recreation supervisor, so I see the kids almost up my office every day. They love the river. Uh, Res Hill is like an untouched territory, I would say, for the kids, and it's like a huge environmental science experience, experiment up there. I've worked with the Forest Service to try to get um, funding so we could find kids to kind of come up there and do studies, and I'm gonna continue kind of that stuff of utilizing our resources for the kids to do kind of outside the school, even though we partner with the school pretty much with everything we do. Um, but I also wanted to do the proximity a little bit about business. Um, it is super cool, and I'm one of the owners of Pagoza Mountain Sports. We have had kids come in, just watch us wrench on bikes, walking from school. And I know that Pagoza Baking has had kids walk to the, to the baking, um, to see kids like how they're operating, how they're baking. And I know a lot of teachers who have gone and gone to specific businesses downtown, and they can walk, which is something like being in the city, you know, you get to do that. Um, you know, as soon as we add that transportation, like we were kind of talking about, it's an ongoing service, now your field trips are bussed, you know, you're not getting that walking school bus that you have, and so I just wanted to put it as a little bit different perspective, because I haven't heard really about any business owners. Um, and you know, we're looking for employees, and kids are employees, and um, we, we have some of our high schoolers who come right after school and will help us close the bike shop. Um, or they're able to work there in the summer, and it's really cool that they just get dropped off downtown. Um, so it's totally different perspective that I just kind of wanted to bring to the table that you're probably not gonna get a lot of business owners who are like, oh yeah, kids are around, they get to interact with us, and that's part of that community, so I just wanted to touch base on that.
Yeah, come, come on up, so we can hear you.
Just had a question.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For P O P U A, so if there are fields that are potentially gonna go out to P O P U A in any of your spots, will that require a vote from P O P U A community members?
A very good question. Um, it depends on the, the cost to P O P U A. So, um, you know, if, if P O P U A allows to say, okay, um, our green belts across the street will let you build a field there. Um, no cost to P O P U A, but we give you the property. Um, but that would probably not necessarily need to come to an owner vote, it would be a board vote.
But it's not a hundred percent guaranteed, but that would be the case. So it could go either way, it could require a vote that gets turned down, or it could just be a board vote, essentially.
Right.
Okay, it depends on the land that's given. So like, this, this, our, that's Pagoza Memorial Park, the land is given to that, to that. And so that is their part, it's not our part. And so that land is green belt for the land. You see?
Got any, anything else, anyone out there? Please.
Okay, I just, I thought of this. Um, I know how important our, um, sorry, this is. Um, I know how important we've talked about our, our athletics are, and it just got me thinking, um, you know, a lot of folks have put a lot of effort into increasing our enthusiasm with our booster clubs and um, really trying to get that pirate pride. And um, I, I found about this consideration about the location of having middle schoolers right next to um, the high school. Is that now, you know, on these home games, um, they're there seeing the lights and the, as buses roll in for the home games. And, and they get to see what they're gonna be a part of in just a few years, and I think that that excitement, that buzz is, is just really important for those upcoming high school students, so thank you again.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, Lisa, Scott, go ahead.
So I'm Lisa, and I've been chair of the impact for this past year, and um, and I just wanna say right off that I don't have any preference where the schools go, I just care that we get new schools. And really focus there is on our community. Um, passing this bond, if we get to a bond, is not gonna be easy. The amount of money that is gonna be asked of our community, whether or not we get a best grant, um, is going to be enormous. And this is not an easy sell, particularly when um, every municipality in our county is asking for money. Um, you know, the town just got one, the county's thinking about it, the hospital's thinking about it, I mean, there's lots of conversation. Um, I encourage us to think big and think about all the things that we can do and all the wonderful things that, that can, that, that can afford us, but I want us to be realistic about that all of that costs money, and we're not gonna have an unlimited amount of money. Um, so it's great that, I mean, one of the impact members brought us this plan of like, why don't we build the school at the high school and build a big athletic field up at Vista? Well, that is a fabulous idea. That is, that is not going to have enough money, that we're never gonna get enough money, even if we partner with P O P U A, the town and the county and every, every individual donor. I mean, that's, it's just not a reality, so I want us, I do want us to live in the reality of what, um, what, what the amount of money we're gonna be asking our community to please support and what that money is going to afford us. And what are the, what are the necessities of building a building, and what are all the niceties that we can all think about and dream about, but I, I mean, I just hate to be a naysayer, but some of that is just not gonna be a reality in the, in the, at least in the short term, it could be a phased approach and think about it as, as, as what we go forward. And the other thing that I just really want to implore everybody here is to advocate for this. Talk to your neighbors and friends and your spheres of influence, and it doesn't matter how you feel about it, whether you like the idea or you don't like the idea, and whether you're mad about the location that's chosen because it wasn't bad, is this, um, it's an emotional decision, but the most important thing is that we all advocate for this. Um, inform ourselves, get other people to be informed and learn and understand and ask their questions. It is a long process from making these decisions to getting a best grant, to hearing about best, and then, you know, making the decision to go forward to the bond and what that looks like. So we've got a long road ahead of us, and we've got a really great opportunity to advocate and educate, and I really encourage us to do that. And while we're doing that, please help mitigate the rumors and the misinformation. Just since our last impact meeting, less than two weeks ago, the amount of conversations and phone calls and information that has come to me and how much erroneous information is out there is just so troubling and disturbing to me that in just such a short amount of time, and it's really based on people stuck in their opinions, stuck in what they've heard. It's stuck, you guys, it's stuck, and it's stuck in your opinion, so please seek, please encourage people to seek the information, be understood, be heard, we want to hear from you all. But the misinformation, the rumors will derail this. I will tell you, it will derail this when we go to polls.
Yeah, wise, wise words, and every one of you is a messenger, but there are two sites, there are no decisions been made. We're information gathering stayed still and will make a decision in January for a K set of schools somewhere. That's, and that's it, spread the word. Yeah, James, please. Are we crossing the sea anywhere yet?
Uh, no. Pray for snow, everybody. Um, I, I wear a number of hats, too. Uh, my son graduated in two thousand and six, and I did actually talk to him about this new school and the two locations. Um, we were fortunate, we lived downtown at the time, so it was easy for him to ride his bike to the school and easy to, to walk to the high school. Um, I, I asked him that question because he's been through that, he's lived here, he's gone to school, and he, he did prefer the downtown location option, but he supported a new school period. Um, and I'm not here to advocate one location or not, I just wanted to share with that, I, I bounce that off my son, who's much older now. Um, but I, I would, I really liked the idea that came up to ask the kids, because that's the getting them involved at the very initial process determining a location could help inform your decision and the decision of their parents and their neighbors when they go to the ballot box, so I really think their input right now could be really helpful, not just, you know, the the kindergartners and the current middle schoolers, but the high schoolers that have lived through middle school and elementary school in this community, because they've done these things downtown. And we all see it, you know, the kids are walking in groups after school, they're playing in the parks, they're just mingling along the riverwalk, so there is some value in downtown. And I agree that losing ball fields would be on multiple levels, not ideal, but you know, those are things that we can find other locations, the elementary school fields might be an option, right, for an example. It'd be nice to have it all centrally located near the facilities, school facilities, but uh, it's still downtown, that might be an option. You know, the town has made some improvements, uh, based on the original effort back in two thousand and eleven, I guess Phil reminded us of the best grant coming forward, and so based on that desire at that time to have one campus, we did invest in some improvements, like the trail along A Street, which is an extension of our Town to Lakes Trail, if you will. Knowing at that time, there seemed to be a lot of interest in the downtown location, so we did, as we reconstructed A Street, included that trail for bicycles and pedestrians. We also included a, we generally punched through Sixth Street as a direct route to the high school parking lot, for example, as part of our uh, public works facility we, we built down there. And we also included detention for stormwater along with our public works facility to capture the drainage that was coming off the, the school property. Um, so we have made some investments on, for that site. That shouldn't necessarily pan into your decision, but just to let you know, we have made some investments, those will still be used, whether or not that's just a high school or it's a mixed campus, whatever the case might be. But I do appreciate the board's volunteerism to serve on this board, this is an important decision. I know when I first moved to this community, the new high school was really the icing on the cake, and our final determination to move here was that there was a new high school being built. So we knew there was gonna be an advanced facility compared to what was here before for our son to go through the, the school process, so again, I thank everybody for your participation. Great comments tonight, and I think you do have a hard decision. I do appreciate the reanalysis of the high school sites, um, which kind of brought those costs maybe a little bit more in line in comparison to the Vista site. I think that was valuable. And I know that you, the school district had bought Dakota Springs property back in the day, and certainly the south side of that property from the drainage is gonna be hard to build on, if it ever gets built on, it's all rock. But the, the north side may have some opportunities there. Um, because that's not all Dakota sandstone, as it is on the south side of the drainage, so just some things to consider.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else? No, we, we'll take a break, then we thank you all for coming, we'll take a break, and then we'll just process anything that the board, you're welcome to say, you're welcome to. So we, we have a regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday, public comment as always. Encourage Stan, on Monday, we're meeting, we have a session like this just for our show, the school district staff, we should hear from them, it's a time card out for that. But you wanna come back on Tuesday and comment again, please do. We'll be processing a little bit tonight and more next Tuesday, and a, and a lot in January. Yeah, we, uh, we have twenty minutes on our allotted time. We can stay longer. Work a little bit on some structure for next Tuesday where after hearing both of these feedback sessions from the public and the staff to process a little bit, round out and capture what did we hear? What did we learn? What do we want to learn more about? What do we see as pros and cons of these sites? Have a little more structure to some processing next weekend, our meeting. But right now, after listening to everything, any reactions you want to share? It's not to advocate. None of us are in any position, I don't believe, of advocating things. It's about understanding, exploring, whatever questions or just reactions. And anything you took away from tonight you'd like to share? Yes.
Just one thing I wanted to mention is what you just said, I will reiterate. We have not made any decisions. We're not leaning towards any decisions that I'm aware of.
But you're, you're, you're in it. You're one of five.
Yeah, I realize that. So maybe you guys have been talking behind my back or something. So, you know, there was a comment made about that we might be leaning towards this site. I just want to make sure everyone understands that it's not the case. So we, we're not leaning towards anything yet. That, that day is coming sooner rather than later now. So I, I just want to make sure that everyone understands. So, you know, there have been no decisions made. We haven't even discussed this amongst ourselves yet. And, uh, so we'll get to that point when it's time to get to that point.
Very, very good point. We tried to emphasize that some, but I get there was the initial analysis of cost. Maybe the business side kind of come out ahead on that. And then the rejiggering of the location of the building equalized those costs. But in either case, none of us have, just for the record, none of us have talked about any site being, one being better than the other.
Absolutely.
It's all about objectively get all the facts that are, that can be put in numbers and get all the input that can be put in impressions and ideas and feelings. Put that all out in front of us to the process. Other thoughts or reaction?
Yes, sir. Uh, and then Rick, this is kind of towards you. I wanted to bring this up to the public that in October, I think Director Schick and I planned to visit the middle school as part of the normal school board visits to schools. And because of an obligation I had, we had to cancel that enforcement setup. Um, and we haven't been able to reschedule that. But part of that certainly would have been a discussion of what, what do kids think about this new school location? Or what, or the aspects of the school? And so because we're coming down in time, we can't do anything next week. I'm just going to propose that I can try to make myself available Thursday or Friday or both picks to meet with kids en masse if possible. I know Josh is not here right now, so we can't contact, contact him. Maybe you could speak with him tomorrow if you think this is a good idea. That's totally, if you think it's a good idea. And then if several board members want to show up to, if we can schedule it, then I think there's still time, Heather, to notice such a gathering and, and get a lot of ears on students. Because that was certainly part of our plan and I apologize, my obligation, I canceled that. So just want to throw that out there. Do my best on Thursday, Friday, and if anyone else can do it as well, because Monday's out, because we have another meeting Tuesday out. Well, in fact, they're not actually out. They're not actually out. Yeah, I mean, consideration of the whole school. So that's actually a possibility. I wasn't always thinking about that. But we have another meeting Monday night and then Tuesday night, but that actually does, uh, you know, completely take out the days. So anyway, whatever would work out with, uh, with Mr. Sanchez and with Ash. I do, I do my best to show up myself and then whoever else can Thursday, Friday or Monday. Or, or Monday, yeah, that's, that's, I didn't. Because I think it's terribly important and it just didn't happen before the rest of the work back for what these kids were thinking. And I agree terribly important. So if we can make it happen, uh, you know, with a, with an open timeframe or at least, you know, a couple of hours. Because I think these kids will have a lot of things to say, especially if they're prompted of what they're going to be asked to chime in. Okay. Very good, very good. That's, we need another meeting. But I'm happy.
We have both timed, timed. I don't think any of us are trying to stretch things out or gee, I don't have time. We're using every bit of our time. One, two, everyone. Other, other thoughts? Maybe you were about to say something?
Yeah, I think that takeaway I have today, and this is my own interpretation of listening to several of the colleagues. Is that I, I, I actually am kind of feeling like, not maybe, I don't think accused is the right word, but like being questions that we are, um, not being creative, that we are not thinking outside of the box, that we have allowed an engineer company and an architectural company to basically come and show us three shapes. And that that has been the extent of creativity that we have taken with a large amount of place that we have. And, you know, as many kids would say, it's like, you don't want to be basic with this. We do want to be big, as Lisa talked about, and we do want to have our community informed. And then, you know, Sophia said something that is, can't we not achieve the goal without destroying? I'm like, why is that this humongous concept that we are feeling that it's either all or nothing? And I'm saying, why can't we potentially structure more options into this design of, um, that it doesn't have to be all or nothing? That we don't have to kill athletic fields and kill girls softball trains and take away community opportunities that we can literally sit back and think that we have acres and acres of space. And we have not decided on an ask of a dollar. And we have not decided on what we are doing. And if we have not, then we should be really open to saying, why aren't we coming up with a solution that can hold both of these truths? That every single person here tonight said, we want to support any school. And we want to recognize the facilities, the use of the community, how our kids are, you know, being, being utilized from, from a creative and athletic approach. So I just think that that has been something that has really stuck out to me. Um, is there's a part of me that believes that we have let outsiders come in and be the, the voice and like best perspective of Pagosa, when actually we are the professionals of Pagosa. We understand our community. We understand our families. We are hearing from our stakeholders. Some of them have decided to stay, others have not, you know? Um, and I just, when we keep hearing, and I appreciate that, I don't have a preference, but can you consider? I don't have a preference. I want the school, can you consider? I'm saying, why can't we align something a little more creatively that is actually checking more boxes? Not taking the same square footage and the same dollar amount. But if we have a different dollar amount and we increase our square footage to include some of these things. Uh, I think that's valuable. And again, I think Bill honestly brought a, a great point is what serves our voters? And that's a big takeaway for me, what is serving our voters? So that's where I'm at right now and just kind of thinking about everything that's in position.
Okay, what, what, what reaction to that would be that felt to me like we, we worked on kind of the funnel concept of having the space in the site, you worked yourself down to two options. And that's where we are now. But before the final decision is made, you get to throw something back in the hop, right? You get to put a new idea in because we're the board, right? Because we get to say, huh, well, you know, huh, what about this? What about that? If it slows things down a little bit or takes more time, it's, it's worth, worth. If that's, if it's made you uncomfortable that the trade offs are too negative, you know, you get this, but choose that. Get this, choose that. How do you get without, without breaking the bank? At least you can't break the bank. That's the one constraint that's unmovable, the total bonding amount the district has within that or other ways to use our resources.
And I guess I wanted to ask again, just to clarify, um, you know, I've had some best experience only in a, a small amount. But Rick, I, I'm wondering like, are we, are you feeling, and is it super constraints on what we have to have as far as like, we have to be ninety-five percent complete with this plan before you believe that okay?
We have to have the type of program, which I believe you have in all this pre-K eight, and we need a space. And then after that, people who will hire architects, you know, interview community members, student organization, shreds. About like, what would that building look like? It's going to be three floors, two floors, one floor, and then one gym, two gyms, six gyms. How much does that cost us? But that, we don't have to do that part, the really getting in, designing what are those services, all of that. So after we've decided where it's going. And where it's going to be shouldn't, I think, shouldn't influence what it's going to look like. Both places are valid and places to build will allow us to build educational setting that's appropriate for, for students. So nope, we do not have to be ninety-five percent avoided there. But we do need to know where that spot is, what we're, what we're going to build and where. And then they'll say, yeah, that sounds great. We can have a common cost estimate. We're using multiple construction companies to give us a cost estimate. We say this is how much we think it is. Then you got to work within that frame. So maybe you can't have gold, you need chandeliers. So I know Amanda, that was supportive.
Number two.
I know, but, uh, but. I know, but, uh, but we will have that frame here that we build within, within that. Orange carpet, orange carpet. Yeah, so we, we haven't crossed that line of like.
But the location address has to be submitted on the grid.
We need to be able to demonstrate that we have done due diligence about the location of the site, we've anticipated the cost, we know that we're building those into that. When I spoke to Meg Donaldson, I think she was about saying, at best, she said, you'd be shocked by the number of people that said, we're going to ask for X millions of dollars to build a school right here. Then they get the money, they go to build there and they're like, oh, that spot actually costs us X plus twenty to build there. So they want to know that we've done that due diligence and we have the support of our community and we've listened to our community, we've gone through all of that, all of that process. But I think the creative aspect that we were talking about, that's very much.
Is that the creative part that the two can include? Like on either of those sites, where do things go?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I've, in my mind, one of our constraints at high school is we start running out of space, right? We've got this bat building over there that's taken up a lot of space. We have this old bat building up that, elementary, I don't like money, but there is space there where that can go there. And that takes care of all the space constraints. That's money, but that's, that's what I mean by being creative too, at the state of the game.
So I'd like to make a, a comment. There, I don't know if anyone who was concerned about the, or like the hillside idea of the high school, again, this is just an idea, because what they've said, we have many decisions. But part of the original, uh, uh, I guess, presentation by the engineers was looking at that hillside site. And clear, it was clear to me this was a hydrological challenge, you know, that they had come up with this, ways to get around it. And so I just wanted to clarify that there was a reason for asking them to create another potential site. Doesn't have to be exactly where Supra Tithes Hole showed it tonight, but I had a lot of concerns about that personally, uh, because you never know, you can engineer to the ends of your earth, Mr. Engineer, and you can't predict a hundred year flood and a big hillside of whatever, damn near ZMI two. And I wasn't here when the high school was built, the new high school, the high school that we have. But, and I, I don't know what the thinking was at the time, but about eight years ago, whenever it was, the whole hillside caved in on the backside. So I want to make sure that wherever we put this building, we've anticipated potentially bad hydrological outcomes, everything else. Personally, I don't have any problem building into a hillside. It does sound like a great idea, but to sort of clarify, the reasoning behind that was because we do not want to have a potential future disaster that maybe insurance won't cover, because you just stuck something in the wrong place. So that, that's just the logic of that. But nothing's set in stone.
Oh, about eight years ago? Yeah, on that, I think it's also the weather. It's, it's not just the hill. You got the lemons and the stream and you got to underground the stream and mitigate weather. So it's not just the hillside, but it's the problem.
It's all.
Right. Yeah. But, yeah, I think, um, a lot of, a lot of value in, you know, the walk around town that comes out this week. Well, a lot of people around the cave towards the high school site on incident seems like life on the way. But, you know, you have to solve the cost and the field problem, at least, um, somewhere, somewhere, I think can be, right? And maybe there's partnerships, maybe there's other things we can do to get a field somewhere else, you know? People downtown would be here somewhere. So I think there's, there's ways to solve that, something to get it. Get both things, um, but if they take some, I mean, partnerships. Ends up something, uh, the school too. I still think gym spaces are something that needs itself as well. I think we're, I've visited a lot of schools playing sports and we're like the only one that has one high school gym. Can't think of another one. So it's not great, especially during basketball season, we've got seasonings over here coming to the school. And we can't, you know, I can't do work of gym, the flip schoolers, they've got gyms. Yeah, so it's not a good setup for athletics and children behind in that, but that's, it's a very interesting thing. Somewhere in here, you can get something that works. Maybe there's a way to, let's say, a more creative building there and you have another gym that also needs to use high school, you know, put it in the box. That box is slightly different than the one that you draw. So if you do that, share that cost and think that solves.
But, you know, I wanted to re-study those diagrams, but they, they have presumed some amount of gym space in that K building, right? There's two gyms.
Two, yeah, that's like the assumption, yeah, because it's, there's that much distortion. But, but it's two.
An elementary gym and a middle school gym inside the building.
Yeah. I don't know how big they are or like arrangement, but they said when you go like over six hundred kids or something, they automatically put two gyms.
And all of that is just for your consideration. You know, when you get to the time of we actually designed it, if someone were to say, uh, we really need six, I'm going to exaggerate it so no one thinks I'm thinking this actual suggestion, we need six full-size basketball courts, um, then that's a decision we can all make as a community to build the school that has that extra space, just because the preliminary drawings that say two, that's only there because that's a typical school with that many kids would have. The, the shape of that school is only there because that's typically what they would do, but it does not mean that we have to build a school that looks like that in any, any way. I mean, that space may not have a, a STEM room and our community might say that is the most important thing. Add that to the building. So there's a lot of questions though, do you still have that?
I guess another thing, uh, I guess maybe we get to know, like, see the full sites, like all the things that are included, all added up, you know? Because we've got, you've got the hundred and twenty-three million dollars box, but does that include a field or does not include? You know, and then we have to fill out a million dollar adder that's like foundations of wetlands, but is that on top of one twenty-three or is that like inside?
So that, that's a great question that we could ask RTA to give us. I've actually had the same thought because some of the drawings show up with a track at, at the middle school, like a track around, and some show up with a track and a baseball diamond thing. And, and I think they're just saying like, you have the space, but I wanted to know if my R hundred and twenty-three million.
Does it get you?
Cover that, but or is that on, on top of that? And so I think that Doug and Brian would jump right to it to give us that if that's what wanted. And I think that'd be beneficial, uh, likewise in light of tonight's conversation. We should probably ask them how much it is to build a softball field and say, all right, well, if we wanted to replicate what we have, it's that times three or whatever that number is or how we partner up. Because I don't know how much it is. I don't even know how much it is to dig up the existing baseball field and move it to the others part there. I, I don't have those dollar amounts in my head. Nor should I be expecting to.
No, that's my expectation.
Let's have them on the phone or whatever.
Yeah.
Or, or here, whatever works. For, for two numbers, for Tuesday.
I mean, I guess I was like a little naive then. I thought some of the things that we were saying, like seeing were within the estimate of where we thought we were. Is that not at all the case?
I think what, what I was agreeing with is, is it, is it really? Because I'm not a hundred percent convinced because the drawings have been so different. There's no fault there, because I think it's, Amy's asking a good question, like, let's price that out. Because, you know, when you get to budgets that are that big, and someone says, oh, we need an extra thirty parking lot spaces, they probably don't even write any number back. That's it. And I don't know if that's the case with a softball field or a track, you know?
So how, how could we get a ideal outcome of ask though? Like, how can we ask for the six gyms? How can we ask for the track and the baseball? You know what I'm saying? How are we deciding though that?
Well, well, so for one thing, let, let's, let's get them on the phone with designs that have been shown to us and say, is that in or out? Is that that number, whether it's a foundation issue or a drainage issue or gym? Let's find out what we're really getting at the Vista site or the high school site four hundred and forty-seven. What is it?
Also, at high school site, they show that field like up on the hill. Is that in? Was that part of it? Can you get that thing?
Yeah, I'm wondering. And that's one that just kind of, obviously coming away, but it still kind of showed up there.
Well, and I also want to remind us that we're not just building a K through eight. This school district has lots of other financial needs. We've got a, we've got a, we've got a twenty-five-year-old high school that has some stuff in the red that are urgent needs. Um, we've got administrative buildings. We've got to figure out what we're, how we're disposing of the other two buildings. So it's not that we can go to the voters and say, this is, these are all the bright and new shiny things we want. We've got to reserve some money for these other things, including PTOs. So there are some other things that need, and, and so that's for the school board to figure out, um, where that pot of money comes from. Is it, is it all built? Is that all bond money or do you guys have other pots of money that you can address those? But there are other needs besides a brand new school and what fields and, and activity space we might.
I appreciate the voice of reason on that, Lisa, for sure. And as well as in the next breath, like we are talking to Rick about our academic growth and our achievement gaps and our teacher retention. I mean, we have big conversations that we are continuously having. This is taking a lot of our attention, but I don't want anybody to perceive that we're somehow dropping the balls in other areas of concern. And I think that right now, because we have this particular time and space to specifically talk about this facility, that that is why we are so focused on what we can do with the space and the large amount of land that we have. One of my questions is, what are we doing with the already owned spaces that we have right now? Like, we are kind of like putting that on a back burner. Maybe it doesn't matter, we'll just offset it. There are multiple areas that we can get really specific and into, but right now I feel insane for thinking that the things that I have seen so far in these drawings have been captured in the, the budget that I was aware of. So that's since it's a high priority right now.
And the, the point I think is, for the drawings that have been provided for two sites, what's included and what's the cost? And is there any room left? If you build a building as drawn, is there any room left in bonding capacity for those things at the high school or whatever? And if there isn't, then there's some serious trade offs to make. But yeah, knowing exactly what the fact base is, we, we know we can change what we build, but what they have designed to date, what's included and what's cost? We know we have to leave some headroom for the everything else category that's coming along. So, so we, we need that, we will do that Tuesday with our, our TA. Yeah. But, you know, it's time, it's time for the concepts to turn into crunch numbers and line items to add up. And then we can still be creative about how do we use our boxes or use our space or use our land and say, well, then, then it's the, the what-if game still being played. We have to build, sure we know what the what is game is, what is, what has been submitted was, what's covering those costs, the budget again. So that's a big part of Tuesday, obviously. What else? Well, just to, to bounce back on site location, the, we've heard several folks from PL, PLPOA and others talk about, uh, perhaps a collaboration of some type. Yet we don't have any meetings scheduled for that. And so looking for, and that's what everybody wants, is more meetings. So I hesitate to even speak that word. But we get back from CASB and then there's the week of fifteenth through the nineteenth of December and then maybe not the twenty-second, but anyway, uh, actually maybe discussion points so that I would like to have a better idea that if it's a school, how could PLPOA, at least with their best estimate now, contribute to our success and perhaps be to theirs? And the only way we do that is, is to talk with them and inform them ahead of time that we're looking for their ideas that might sway the decision towards that site.
But we do need to have those same conversations with community entities on this side, because to me that feels like we are consulting over there as a bias there and we would need to come back and talk to, you know, uh, Park and Rec, talk to, you know, like the town. So to me, it feels like we are opening up conversations to give people leverage and control points where we still don't have a lot of foundational knowledge of things. So I think that that's a good point that I would like to balance it out with the other side as well.
Well, and to, to play tennis, I mean, we have heard right here tonight and before from the, the town viewpoint, I think there's a lot of, uh, conversation that has come from emails and letters and here at these meetings about the amenities that are in place downtown. And so PLPOA has said we could perhaps collaborate, but I think that's still pretty thick. Myself, I need more input on that before I say, well, I'm going to go for the Vista site because, well, there's, you've been promised or it's been speculation that they might contribute. No, that's not good enough. We really need to know, um, what their viewpoints might be and it might give us, uh, some clarity.
I mean, the GM for PLPL tonight said he could not give a determination of who would actually get the vote tonight, question. So I think clarification would be a necessity. He couldn't tell us tonight who would actually have paid that.
We got one, so we got one month.
Can I make a suggestion? Then I can get in touch with Alan and see if there's a time when our, either our boards can get together, work with representatives from each board, we get together and start with that. And then I'll do the same, I'll call David Harris, Stephanie, and he's probably the other entity to talk about downtown in Tuesday, see if we can set up a meeting similar as this site.
I think with representatives, if two, two of us go either, that kind of looks something like that. I, I think in both cases, there's always some uncertainty. It feels like there's a lot of uncertainty at PLPOA, it just, it would be, it'd be this group voting or this group voting, but I still like that conversation. And in town, that conversation, just keep it even and keep it cool.
I can set that up.
And the other municipality that you cannot overlook is the county. Um, and just what they have, what they own. I mean, you know, I mean, you need to hear from, I mean, I, I think some of you missed, some of these municipalities, that you're going to hear, we don't have a lot of money. We don't have extra money. Of course, we want to collaborate. Of course, we want, you know, wide community assets, let's talk about what that is. But, um, the county owns the most lands here, um, so, you know, I would hate for them to be excluded from the conversation.
Plan some discussions for those three entities.
Are they going to be just public or were you saying they would be just a couple of people?
I'll see, just given the short time.
Yeah, preliminarily, a couple of people going to, you know, just break or something, pairs, go around chats, come back and report. I don't think it's public. There's also no certainty that anyone can make any ironclad commitments at this stage. Unless they ready gather some ironclad document that holds everyone's skin to the fire.
Oh, I'm the secretary now, I sign things. Right, that's me.
Ironclad. All right.
Anything else I could manage or take care of before next meeting? If you all have any questions.
Yeah, do you, do you want me to contact Josh or Janae or you?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'll talk to you tomorrow. I got a meeting next day tomorrow. So we'll, we'll close that loop.
Yeah. Anything else for tonight? Everybody's, our, our agenda for the future is getting pretty well hammered out, Monday and Tuesday, but that's.
Our agenda for the future is getting pretty well hammered out. Monday and Tuesday, but lots, lots of items will. Get together, put that in, look down on paper and get it out to you before next week.
I would like to make a suggestion, if I could, just based off something that Lisa said, which is. Uh, if we could bring to you a list of things that we are considering, if a bond goes forward. Or things that we might need. Um, like an HVAC system at the high school that's not low with dollar amounts. Or, you know, as maybe say, we're, we are eyeballing, like, how do we get enough gym space for our high schoolers? Um, and so some of those items that, um, Jason and I have discussed. That may be on that list, expanding the San Juan mountains. Um, we could bring some of those things and maybe if you could also. What are these other projects that we need to get done? Along with building this, or just one of the events. Yeah, we do make fun campaigns, something for everybody who lets included to that. There's got to be something in there that someone says, oh, that's, that that's important to me too. And we also have some major capital improvements that we need to make at the high school in addition to. I would just propose that we take some time at the December and, and January meeting to. Figure out what, how, which of those are bubbling up that's most important.
But we ought to have in December, we got to have a good read on the exact number associated with those drawings. One, two, at least a preliminary list of what else we're going to have to cover. Capital needs, whether it builds other needs, kind of have to fit into that. Ceiling, we've got a lot of them. And we can refine it later, but I don't want to wait. January, have at least a preliminary list.
We'll get started.
Tuesday, you can try and carry.
Yeah. Yeah. None of the staff have an opinion about where to be, so Monday.
Rains engaged full-time, so that's really good. So let's, let's call it a night. Good for everyone. Thanks for coming, everyone. One more.
I just had a question. I didn't know if I was able to ask the question.
You can.
Okay, okay. Um, so you were talking about meeting with all the students and, um, I know that. Our kids, they wanted to survey their peers because they like heard us talking about all of this and. They said, well, why don't, because I said, well, what do you guys think? And then it grew from there. And so I just wanted to know, like. Would that be valuable for them to continue with this, like. Survey project that they wanted to embark in and like surveying their classmates on.
In just initiating kind of as their independent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like, would that be valuable? Like, I know you're, you're having a meeting, but like this was kind of like already like.
I, I think if kids want to do things. You know, that's, that's, that's kind of here's your call.
Oh, okay.
And their call.
It would be, you would consider it would be valuable.
Yeah, I, I just, for full transparency, that happened today and I stopped it. So I'm happy. Um, because. I, because I'm concerned about like, well, what kids get surveyed? Is it broad? Is it across all the kids? Uh, which parent was behind that survey? How was the question worth it? What is it? Is it someone who has their own individual, you know, plan for a come come? And so because we didn't know any of those things. And someone showed up at school today with a survey that just said, no, we're not going to do that. Um, because I don't want to give either the kids or the parents that might be helping the kids. The survey the impression that the result of their survey is going to. Match align or be the result of this very difficult decision. I, and so I, just full transparent, I might have known something wrong, but I did stop it for that reason. Also, the depth. Of the complexity of the decision is very different than what the kids are asking each other. And their opinions about if they want to go to school with each other or if they're just mimicking what their parents are saying. So I'm. Really concerned about setting the kids up. Um, or to gather information that isn't going to influence.
I think that's valid. And I know that what the whole point is, is that their voices are valid. Not what the result is. That they're not thinking that they're the ones picking it, but what we're saying or what they are understanding is. It's valuable what they think. And we think that's valuable. And so. Whatever that is, it's an important part of including them in this engagement process of making this process.
But I think, I think you heard that from us too. You know, we, we want to do that. I think hearing their voice live and I think with, for example, you know. Certain agreement that you got to watch out for surveying anybody anytime that, that it's really, you know, that it's really well done. That it's representative.
It's middle schooler, so it's filling a bubble, you know? And so it's, um, you know, their own kind of like, what would you ask each other and, you know, it's their own project. So I understand what you're saying. I was just asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, you know, you are all saying, yes, and the meeting, all the person.
Hearing kids live, I think, is one of the best ways to make sure they feel they're heard. You get a chance to talk, all the, all the adults in the room and certainly their voice really does count. And we heard that about.
What is that?
How it comes to public comments.
How it comes to public comment, alright. Um, and I just have one other piece as you were talking, which I was speaking to, um, Jane, they called. And I said, hey, James, and you're like, I only have the map of. Maybe in his mind and where, to your point, like, can we achieve this, right? Like, can we achieve both? Can we not lose the softball field? And what we discussed was like, well, what about the parking lot? Because there's a whole nother parking lot right here. That it could be a high school parking lot, you just build on the parking lot. Or what if there's like multiple parking lots? And so I just wanted to share that with you. I should kind of like. Think about where everything goes, that it's not over a weapon, so it's not over a stream and that. That parking lot doesn't have to be one giant parking lot, especially when there's like already a parking lot, it's gravel. But right next door and that maybe the field, it doesn't go in the field, goes on a parking lot. So I just wanted to share that because like we had discussed. I'm sorry, and this is to Lisa's point, which she had said really about misinformation, right? Like that's derailed the process. And I find that everywhere I go, like someone said, hey, oh, well, they said they already created cycles, but where they said it didn't matter what it is, or, you know, like. People are, well, I want a closer for this or traffic map. And I feel, and I know we have like. Reporter people here.
Pretty much.
And then I feel like there's a moment to say, hey, everybody, we're engaged deeply in this process and we haven't picked any yet. And we are making sure that we get all the information. And this is what we've found out so far. Traffic piss, cost piss, and even if like ten million dollars that you're talking about, when you're talking about a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And that is like contingency, you know, that is ten percent contingency because they're not like. Big like components. And so please, like, give us the info, not like, we have a website, like, I know. Yeah, a lot. And nobody does that, but if you can do it, please, we could do it for it for us on the court side. This is important, this is important, this is important. This is what we know, this is what we know, this is. That would be so helpful to not derail this process and give people doubt or just. Crush what is going on because you need a.
Yeah, that's, that's certainly what we're attempting to do is keep it very clear what we're doing here tonight. Our next step is. What decisions have not been made and so spread the word on that.
Just one, I'll be quick. Um, I'm concerned about, you know, how we're surveying the students and what we're asking them and, and I think there's just so many things that people really. Didn't derail about. I agree about the voice. Um, and hearing their voices and I, and I hear that, um, but, but I think we need to be realistic about what information they're getting, how they're facing that opinion and. And I think, um, for you to say, is it valuable? I think, let's be clear, it's, I mean, you, I'm not going to speak for it. It's interesting. It may not be valuable and it might not help drive the decision. And then you're setting people up for, you know, just part of the misinformation, the rumor mill and all that. What's, what's also been missing here is parents. Um, when we're talking about our students, we also talk about our parents. I mean, I love, I love an active parent and an engaged and active parent. And I, I am that person too, which is why I'm still in this and my kids are gone. But who we have not heard from? Is a lot of, a lot of people who are not the active parents, but their education is just important and clear. We have not heard from anybody in VSO. We have not heard from anybody in Aspen Springs. These are populations that we need to be very, very concerned about and try to engage in this process. And. I tried very hard to get some people an impact on that and was not successful. Um, so I, I think we need to be thinking about that and, and the, and the fear of people because. Active parents cannot be the sole voice for what parents want.
Good points all.
I just want to say I'm not that parent. I'm here for process and when you identify stakeholders, you have to identify as a collective stakeholder, like the tribal nation. Whatever it is, and you're at the end game right now. And we are all just showing up right now saying, hey, did you think about this? Hey, did you think about this? Hey, there's, this is important. My only is, is do I think. Whatever the kids say is going to get it or whatever I say is going to get it. What is important is that you hear from everyone. So when you make whatever decision you're going to make. We need to be, we, we did it the best of our ability. And even we end with help. So I just. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And you are in it and we're going to keep getting more people in it and. Keep putting out information that's accurate and hopefully people read, because I think the paper has been accurate. And so keep, keep reading the paper, keep reading the, it was getting posted, it's accurate. We're a.
I mean.
We're going to carry on.
A certain amount of people.
And we, we know there are a lot of people who pay attention a lot at the end. And the end is when it gets on the ballot. And that's actually where all of our work is going to get really serious is explaining again how it really happened, how it matched with what it is and why we should hold. We all know, those of us here might be advocating this or that, but we want to speak. We want to speak.
And the students' interest comes first.
Thank you all.
And we're really nice to personally people.